Thank you for coming to this meeting. This is a work session, by the way, and so I just just wanted to first of all, ask Director Leoni if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm looking around the room. I do not see any members of the media here. Are there any online that would like to introduce themselves? Okay. And again, this is a work session, so we will not have public participation this evening. And just a reminder to turn your microphones on when you speak and turn them off when you're finished. And also, please remember to silence your cell phones. And so I'll hand it over to our superintendent.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good to see everyone tonight. Appreciate. Just want to say thank you for your participation and Janet Chelsea have helped prep a lot of materials. Thank you very much and for your active participation kind of with reading this packet beforehand. I do want to just make sure we know Director Krimmets is out traveling excuse tonight and and might see Director Hammerson tonight. He's focused on his family tonight. We hope he'll join us if he's if possible by Zoom tonight.
We welcome Susan Miller from Wolfheart. Wolfheart and she has been a consultant for us and she's going to be giving us some direction here on what we're going to be doing this evening.
Great. Thank you so very much for having me this evening. As you know, we met, I think it was back in June and we had a little bit more of an extensive conversation about what was happening in the district and what we're looking at in terms of the portfolio of your facilities this evening. We're going to be a little bit more focused really on what you all need in terms of where your vision is and where you want to go in alignment with your strategy and how you want to continue to serve your students. So just a real quick overview of why we are doing what we're doing for a facility master plan, the Oregon Technical Assistance Program, TAP, has is one of the catalysts. They provide assistance in in working to build a long range plan. And if we go to the next page, we can look exactly at which components we're working on. We did the facility condition assessment a couple of years ago, so that's been completed and we've updated that to bring it current. And now we're in that phase of the long range facility planning. Where do we want to be two years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, and potentially even beyond? And so this evening, your team and your district leadership has put together on the walls, I believe. Jared, I think that's where you have them is just concepts and ideas of, you know, really, where do we want to be investing our dollars and how we're going to use those dollars in classrooms to serve students and support staff? On the next page, we have really what we're looking at in terms of what do we think about for our long range plan and our investment considerations? And I'm not going to read everything on this page. I believe you've, you know, you've seen this. It's been in your hands, but it's everything from looking at really what our buildings need, considering their age and how we need to maintain them and keep them upgraded to keep them safe, warm and dry for our students and staff as well as, you know, what do we need to be thinking about to support instructional programming in your schools as it's been changing over time from STEM to CTE, special ed, et cetera? And then really, how are we operating our facilities, those efficiencies and spending our finite dollars? We know that money doesn't, of course, grow on trees. And so we are certainly cognizant of how best to be efficient from an operational side. So those are just a couple of the components that we're beginning talking about this evening and what you guys are going to be working through. And so where are we now in this process? Well, right now, as you recall, we had that meeting earlier this spring. We're now coming up to the that gold box. You all are the kind of the the gold team, so to speak, where you're going to be looking at the different ideas and concepts this evening and helping us to prioritize. We'll then move into talking with leadership on how we want to present this work to our community and then be able to have a dialogue with the community to discuss really what the priorities are and where we see ourselves moving over the next number of years. We'll come back to you all in the November timeframe. You'll receive information about the survey that we'll have done. And then we will discuss with your team really how we want to refine this. And then in December, we'll bring it back to you as a board. Of course, you'll be informed along the way and however, you know, you want to be involved. But we'll bring it back to you at the December meeting where ideally we'll have your blessing to move forward, of course, and then we'll send it on to the state of Oregon. They need the report and the plan by the end of December. So that is our objective of how we're working through this over the next number of months. And then this is just really how this work is going to be aligning with your strategic plan and kind of keeping this at the focus so that we're able to move forward in alignment with your goals and your objectives and what you all have put together for your strategic plan from appropriate and timely instruction to our safe and inclusive spaces for our students and children, efficiencies, effective operations, as well as how are we growing our staff and having them be leaders?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there more?
Nope, that's all. And then I'm just passing it on back to you guys.
Okay, thank you. Actually, Jared, would you take it from?
Yeah, you betcha. So thank you, Susan. Appreciate that. So at your tables, you should have a copy of this document right here. I want to spend just a few minutes on this and also before I kick it back over to Chair Minor, just talk about a couple of things. So let me just start with this. There's several things that you will see tonight on the walls. And there's several things you won't see on the walls. I want to start with things you won't see first on the walls. Some of the things that we've talked about in the past that have been board priorities have actually already happened. We've completed a number of projects and I want to talk a little bit about that real quick. So thanks to our board and thinking forward around our strategic plan. We have had since the last time we did a facility use plan about $25 million in general fund and grant money go into our facilities. And that's what the you'll notice here on these boxes. So this is not an exhaustive list. But if we think about over the last five years, what's happened in our schools that had been priority areas, we have been able to, I don't need to read through all these, but we've made some pretty significant safety improvements and security improvements. Those have been both seismic and in terms of controlled access and kind of hardening the exterior of our schools to make sure kids can be safe and staff can be safe when they're in our schools. And we've made a number of infrastructure improvements. They haven't been, it's certainly not everything we need, but we've done everything with the board's support from some HVAC upgrades, some facilities upgrades with bathrooms. We have a new softball facility and, you know, pocket doors. We noticed at the last last place at Eastwood and we've made some upgrades. Now, on the right hand side in the green, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of the total number of dollars that has been approximately spent since the last time we did this and kind of where the money came from. So the first, we were in a pretty unique spot with Esser funding and COVID. We, as you know, COVID came with a number of controls. And when you talk about federal funding, that was it's federal funding that was managed by the state. So you had kind of a couple layers of approval that was exhaustive and many thanks to many people in this room who've worked through those processes. We spent about $7 million of our COVID funds and capital improvements. We, over the time of the last five years, we've received and spent about $10.5 million in seismic rehabilitation. Dollars have been awarded about $1.6 million in nutrition services funds and about $5.25 million in our general fund. You could also think of the 404 fund, which is our major maintenance fund. And that's what's helped keep our buildings moving and going forward. It's probably worth noting, there's a spot at the bottom there. In the last 10 years, we've been awarded just over $18 million in seismic funds alone. And those are, you have to apply, you have to do the work to get in line for those. And so kudos Cheryl and her department. She's been a huge, probably the leading force of ensuring those funds have come in. And probably worth noting too, we were, we've been looking for all sorts of ways to fund our infrastructure that's needed. A reminder, we did receive an update on the America School, the Renew America School grant funds, 1.25 $2 million. That will be for Eastwood and Jolene for HVAC upgrades. So this is kind of a little bit of what you won't see. These projects have been talked about as priorities for the board in the past. They're not up here because we were able to complete some of these creatively. Two more things if I have just a minute. I want to talk just for a minute with the board about why these investments. So over the last five years, we've had three bond attempts. And I think it's important for the board and the community to hear and remember that the bond process has involved reaching out to the community, doing internal facilities assessments, polling, redefining kind of the board priority and hearing for the board, what is most important for the board and for the community moving forward. Most of what you'll see up here, if not everything, have been things we've talked about in the last five years that are that are board priorities. They remain a priority. But one thing you will see up here is there's also, hey, is there anything we've missed? And so there's a spot for if the board gets around to work session to say, what about this? Should we consider this? I also want to just mention tonight about enrollment. So we heard from Susan and her team about, you know, looking at enrollment trends and we've, of course, been tracking our own enrollment trends. Our enrollment's been is down since COVID. We stabilized. But it's something we will look at long term. I think that the initial or the draft report of the facilities report had us in 10 years with a potential 655 student decline, if I remember right from after right. So I don't, it's hard to project out. We've got some things happen in the community with, you know, land swaps and more housing, some more CTE work, I think will drive students to want to be here when they see the work. But what I'll say about this enrollment, at least in my opinion, the most of what you see here is independent in its purpose around enrollment. What I mean by that, it may not be, it may not be independent of the cost of this. But when we think of things like air quality, for example, we will have buildings regardless of regardless of our future enrollment that will need to consider upgrading. We really don't have, and it's in this, what you see up here, and of course, the board is going to direct if there's more things we need to consider. But there's not much in the way of new construction in this. We do have the old main. We do have we do have multipurpose gyms, but we, you know, what we don't see up here are brand new facilities in this five and 10 year plan that I think would require us to really key into where our current enrollment trends are. So again, what you'll see here is a bit of a repeat. That is because I think the board's done some really, really good work in determining what things are priorities. So hopefully this was helpful and just in the for the board to have a an understanding of where we've been in terms of funding our facilities around safety and infrastructure in the last, since the last iteration of the facilities plan.
Great, great.
Thank you.
So I, I am, you received this information last week. And I am sure that you had a chance to kind of rate where you think each thing belongs, whether it's started now, two years, five years, 10 years. So what I thought maybe what we would do, because you know, sometimes you have an idea of what you want or what you think is important, but someone will say something that will make you maybe change your mind. So we have to do this together. And you may have thought of something that someone else hasn't. So if maybe we can just talk about each one, just read through it. Let each person kind of say their piece on that. And then maybe we'll just kind of get a poll where you where you feel it is at. And then after we go through all of them, we can go through and kind of vote again because our opinions may have changed. We also have Tracy here. So if we have any questions, you know, that pertains in in his department, we can ask him for clarification and any any of our wonderful executive team, I'm sure. So let's start out with, as we receive them in order, air quality. Oh, I will say that Director Krimmets did give me what her thoughts were. So I will speak for her as we go along. But so air quality. And the reason I want to read this is for people who are online and they don't have this information in front of them. So they can understand what we're considering. So it's air quality is the first one. Upgrade and install heating, cooling, air exchange systems district wide. The student benefits are allows for continued operation of school buildings during heat waves and poor outdoor air quality due to wildfire smoke. Consistent temperature control creates a more comfortable learning environment, improving concentration and academic performance. Improved air quality can reduce respiratory issues, allergies and asthma symptoms leading to better student health, cognitive abilities and attendance. The performance of adults, including teachers and school staff, has been shown to improve with higher ventilation rates. Enhanced ventilation helps reduce the spread of airborne illnesses, contributing to a healthier school environment. Better air quality supports students with environmental sensitivities, creating a more inclusive learning space. Now, there are also community benefits with each of these. So this allows for continued operations of school buildings during heat waves and poor outdoor air quality due to wildfire or smoke reduces healthcare costs associated with poor air quality impacts on children and staff and staff creates safer and healthier environments for community elements hosted at school facilities demonstrates the district's commitment to sustainable and energy efficient building practices aligning with broader community values. Improved air quality in schools can enhance property values in surrounding neighborhoods. So those are just some of the benefits. I'm sure there are even a lot more, but we wanted to keep it to one page and Chelsea did a great job. Thank you so much. So I'd like to start with Director Shirkcliffe, would you like to kind of voice your opinion on that and where we stand, where you stand on that?
I guess so. Air quality is my number one thing on this whole list out of all of them. It's the thing that's is most complained about, most talked about. It affects every single person, student, teacher. Personally, that's my daughter just went to high school. She said, man, it's the greatest thing ever. Most of the classrooms have air conditioning. It's amazing. That's the best thing about being in high school is I don't have to be in air conditioning, but and it just affects everybody. I mean, nobody's in a good mood when it's 100 degrees, teachers, kids, it's just creates a recipe for disaster. And the smoke, we don't want to send kids home. That's we have, there's more threat of us sending kids home from smoke than there is from snow or anything else. So that's my number one pick on the whole list.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with that. It is probably the number one thing I I've seen. I mean, it's the main, the main problem seemed like last year was really bad. And it was the beginning of the year. Everybody's just trying to get started and boom, that stuff hit us and it just stifled. I think it stifled a lot more than we know. This year it wasn't as bad, but still. And you know, and as we go on different tours, there are some rooms that had an air conditioner and there are other ones that didn't. And I think anything to bring the quality up across the board would be, I'd be, that's my number one issue also.
And I will echo Director Krimmets's thoughts on that. She had said the same things that you had said and this was her main priority as well. Director Cotton?
I think there's a reason why it's listed number one on this page. It's my number one issue too. I mean, yesterday was 99 degrees. We're almost in October. I don't know. I have to have to assume it was hot once again in many of our buildings. And so we just, you know, it's just not a September, early September thing. So air quality is is my number one issue.
Great. And Director Cubic?
Yes. Yes, I'm here. I had to manipulate all this data to evaluate it on my own and then come back. So I wanted to just say a couple of things about that because it applies to all the things that I looked at. I first of all said, what are the categories of issues here? And I had maintenance, safety, bond, and then maybe other in all of these character, all of these ideas. Then I looked at my own assessment. Observing the board, observing our facilities, being on the budget committee, knowing the age and duration, having some familiar with the buildings. On these, all of these issues, I put a high, medium and low. And that doesn't mean that a low one isn't high, but a low one needs to wait. And so when if I say a low, it doesn't mean it's a bad proposal. It's just wait, you have to wait longer. And and then after that, I went back. And oh, and then as I write over these, I made marginal notes and said, what are they? And then, and then you can find my assessment and my, my, you know, I filled out the form. After I did those three analyses. So with regard to air quality, I said it's a maintenance, it's a health and safety, it's long overdue and it's a high priority. Sorry for a long answer.
No, it's great to see your process and how you, you know, you've been on the board before and in your background, this is valuable information. So we honor that. So, and I, just to let you know, I was in a meeting earlier with Director Hammerson and and he had voiced his opinion that he thought that this was probably one of his most important ones as well. So I think we have a pretty good read on that. But we will revisit that at the very end, just to see if maybe something was said that would maybe have changed your mind. That sound okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
What was your rank?
Oh, what was my ranking? I'm right there with you. I, this was my number one, my number one priority. Thank you for asking. I forgot that. So the next one is controlled access. The description is an electric strike exterior and interior, interior doors throughout all buildings allows for one push emergency protocol, response action, protective window film. This for the students enhances school safety by adding additional layers of security to schools, limiting unauthorized access and ensuring students are secured during the school day. Reduces anxiety for students knowing that their school is proactively managing safety and a quick response in emergencies improves student outcomes in crisis situations. Community benefits provides peace of mind to parents and community members, knowing that schools are taking advanced measures to protect students and staff. Create safer venues for community use after school hours like events and meetings. So we can talk about that, but I would actually like to ask Superintendent Corden if he would kind of give just a little more information on that, especially a real time example that we had recently.
Yeah, so I this could be a little bit misunderstood because we've done quite a bit in the area of controlled access, right? There are some really some really great technologies in terms of controlled access that I know several of us talk about Cheryl, Tracy and I talked about soft and with others too, in terms of how we can think about particularly an active aggressor. So many schools, for example, almost all new builds of a school facility will have ways to immediately lock exterior and interior doors in the event of an of a threat. Right now, we, we have been able to secure the outsides of our buildings with fencing. But if we look at like, for example, the tragedy in Georgia that happened this month, they had received information about a credible threat inside the building as a student. And they were able to lock down interior doors with a push of a button. And so controlled access would really gets us in this one, we have some protective film and some things. It's really about enhancing the safety features in terms of being dynamic. Thinking about, sometimes we think about a threat coming through the front door. And so how do we make sure we funnel everyone does to check in? We've done some really great progress with Raptor and you know, the how to make sure visitor management's there and vestibules. We need to do more work in our schools around controlled access. This can happen in a way that still is not cumbersome and not noticeable unless it's needed. And so this would be a way to, depending on the specific threat to have a consistent, quick way to respond to a threat to business schools.
Thank you. So we're going to start again. How we go from the other side this time and go with Director Cubic and let him have his thoughts on this.
My short story is if it's partially done. My short story on this one is partially done, clearly safety. We have a continuing focus. But with regard to my prioritization, because I think it's ongoing, I put it as a medium priority.
So would you say then that's two years or three years?
Two years.
Okay, okay. Director Cotton?
Well, I put it as past due and now because it just takes one incident. I mean, it takes one time and we're not stepping on anybody's toes. But I've been in buildings where doors have been opened, propped open, left open still. And it takes one time, one time for a bad person to hop the fence, get in our building somehow. And, and it's, it's I think anything that deals with safety to me is past due and it's now.
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Tracy if this would also monitor. Do you just give me a yes or no, but this would monitor also if after school a door is left open someplace? It would, it would show that we have an open door someplace?
Put a proximity switch. As long as we put a proximity switch on each door opening, it will show on a screen that we have a door standing open. But that the current technology takes somebody to look at that screen to see it.
Okay.
I'm sure it can be set up to where we receive a notice via text or email or something indicating that a certain door is open.
Okay, thank you so much. I will read Director Krimmets. She said that she put it as a do now. She, she believes it's needed for overall safety monitoring. And I agree also. And that was, was one of my, my top ones as well. But I'm eager to hear what everybody else says as well. So take it away.
I better understand what it is. Somebody's breaking into the school. It's one button. Somebody presses in the office, everything locks up, internal and external. How it works?
It can.
Or they have control. Is it control or just maybe the exterior? Or I mean, how does it work?
Yeah. So we have a, what we call a standard response protocol and it would be to kind of how we like the, the operational procedure we would go into based on the threat. So these are set up early around kind of our, our what we call you know, our standards, our SRPs, our standard response protocols. We have something we call EOPs at each building, which is kind of our emergency operation procedure at each building. So they can be designed to, to give staff a way to respond to a certain level of a threat. So could it be electronic key strike to not have to get your little hex key to shut a door? Absolutely. Could that be for exterior doors and interior doors? We've actually seen over this last year fewer incidents where we have strangers entering a building. We've actually seen an uptick in students themselves who we welcome into our buildings being a threat at times. And so let's, it lets and these can happen like in most new buildings. Like the office staff will have literally four push buttons you could hit and that would start an electronic notification and also hardware working to lock. They can also be set by if somebody sees something that's not in the front office by picking the phone up, pushing a button and having things lock. So it, there's lots of different modalities that can be used. But it's essentially controlled access would be providing or limiting access based on a potential threat. Providing or limiting access based on a potential threat.
It would, so what's, what's protective window film?
Yeah, this is under controlled access, but um, we have invested recently on a couple different, um. Products, if you will. Um, some are more of like we've seen in the vestibules. It's like ballistic glass. Um, that's not what this is, um, although, um. There are ways that that could happen. Uh, what this is referencing here is. Um, someone attempting to enter a building. That, um, this, these, at least currently, unless something's happened, Tracy, I don't know about. Typically, it's a layer of. Uh, material that would go inside.
They can't see in, but.
It would mostly be like not allow someone to, if they had a bat, it might take you, you know, ninety seconds to break through something. Um, it's not ballistically rated, most of this, meaning kind of, kind of. Kind of round go through that, a gun, uh, you know, bullet, yeah, but. I would just give us a level of protection. We think about entry.
So is this the replacement of all the windows that are exterior or just certain windows?
We've, uh, we've done a number of these actually in our own, on our facilities where we, there are some spots where we've, um. We've kind of tested this out, if you will. Uh, we've done some, um, of our own testing of this. In terms of how effective some of these things are, they actually are, are relatively effective. So it would be, it would be continuing in terms of controlled access. To say there may be spots in a building that could, um, someone might try to enter a building. This could even be after hours for that matter. Um, that we, if we had a, a little more protective window film, might be a good idea.
Okay, so I mean, I put it as, as needs to be done now, it because it, it is, it is security. It is that. That one more layer that we, I think we need or we should have.
Great, thank you. Um, Dr. Short Cliff?
I put five years just because I was trying to line everything out and appropriate, you know, we go, we can only do so much ones and twos and threes. Um, but I agree with all you guys that it could be a do now thing, um. I don't remember, did we try and add this in when we did the vestibules and things and it was not available or it was too much money or did we even discuss it? I think we talked about it. But.
But with the vestibule builds, we have incorporated these technologies into those. We have the ballistic glass. We have the films in some cases. Uh, but we haven't expanded it necessarily everywhere.
So yeah, I could, I could easily put it as past due or now, but on my first go through, I put it as five.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, I do see that it, these are on the screen, so we'll move to drop off and it, um. In the light of time, I will just read, you know, what the project is so that we can move forward quicker. Um, drop off, drop off safety projects at elementary schools. So why don't we just start back with you and?
I put this one as another five years, uh, because I think it'll take five years to do that. I mean, this isn't a, we can go in and put stuff in. This is redesigning and paving and it's gonna be a, a project. But, so that's why I.
So what is, what is a drop off safety project? I mean, it's an example of one.
Do someone want to address green drop off? Or actually you're.
I do Melrose drop off.
Okay, yeah, that's what I said.
It's a pretty decent one. It's just controlling the cars in a way so that the kids are safe and the teachers are safe right now. It's, it's a mad dash every morning. I mean, you've got. Four hundred cars trying to get through in a ten minute window and everybody wants to get their kid out and on time and, um. They try and be as safe as they can, but everything could be upgraded to be a better, and I've been to. Five, four, five, six different elementary schools with my kids and it's, it's not good anywhere. I mean, we're, we're doing okay comparatively, but it's terrible everywhere.
So, so it is, is it hiring a person to? Be a traffic guard or a traffic cop telling people when and how to move around or is it physical? Lines or is it like a, you pull a little number?
I would, my concern is. When we tour the different schools, my concern, when, when I first saw this, I immediately thought about green. It's right there on Karn's Road, which is just buzzing. And uh, so it was like, is there a way that we can take that whole process and kind of move it away from the, away from. The main road and circle around the building or something. I don't know. Um, there could be potential there, but that drop off safety is something, the first thing I went to was. This is happening two times a day with every single one of our elementary students. So. It's like, how do we make this as best as we possibly can?
Add one more dangerous thing. At, at Joe Lane, for example, the teachers come out and they stand in, in between moving vehicles. Everyone to make sure that nobody's going where they're not supposed to be going. So the teachers are putting themselves in arms way between every single car that goes through, um, morning and afternoon. It's. It's good for the children, but it's probably not the safest thing for teachers to be doing, but they, they do it.
Does that answer your, your questions?
I guess, I, I just, I don't understand. I mean, what is it? Is it a, it, you know, you have teachers, you have traffic cop, you have, is it lines in the road with?
So really, I didn't change that.
Most of our campuses. Have inadequate. Real estate available in the front of the building to allow for a, for buses and parents to drop off students. So this really becomes a civil engineering. Consultant would have to come in, assess our properties. Uh, draw up plans. It becomes, you know. Dirt work like a knife river or somebody like that comes in, moves a whole bunch of dirt, adds. Parking lanes, maybe roads in some cases. Uh, to get people off of main thoroughfares into our campus to be able to safely. Let their kids out, um, you know, Fremont's another good one. Everybody, buses and cars all coming in on one single road. Hitting the cul-de-sac and then trying to get back out. Um, causes a lot of different scenarios there, um. Fullerton, I mean, really, you can just pick any one of our schools. And go there in the morning and watch and it's. We're, we're on city streets. We're in a little bit of our parking. We're just kind of scattered everywhere. While the shotgun blast of students come into our campus and. So it's, it's a pretty involved project.
So this, this is a really big deal. This is really, hey, so. Uh, I guess maybe the initial thing would be to hire a consultant to give us advice on that. So this isn't something that could just be done.
When I, yeah, I, I think it can be as, I think it's, we're kind of testing the, the idea. This would require a significant amount of. Um. I think there, I'm thinking about uh, an elementary school that could probably just be better with a redesign of how. Certain cars enter and exit. It might be, you know, sometimes you look at, uh, a parking lot and you're like, why is the island right there? Cause it, or the way the bus drop off works, like, I'll pick up Eastwood for a minute. Why can't the buses just, why do they have to go right there? Why can't they just go on the property we own? So I think some of it may not be as expensive, but, uh, we currently, um, don't have a fund. To really look at drop off safety, although many people know that if you drive your kids to school. It's kind of a daily issue with how to get in and out of there in a way that, that kids are safe, right? And.
So do, do we have a school that actually does work well in our district? I mean, that things aren't really bad?
I, I think there is still issues with the high school. I think it's the one that was actually designed. After we had the amount of traffic we have and so was designed for the purpose. So you see the, the buses are set in a certain place and where the traffic comes through. Not that there still isn't issues, but I think it's one of the few that we have designed for modern times.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that. It's probably our best campus.
If I could help, um. It's floor management, driveways, uh, alternate parking, supplemental parking, uh, access or. Control features that are just physical features on the ground. It's all of those things. So we have safe circulation and then also separation.
So I, it, so one, based on what I hear, I mean, I would think that it's really important to do it as soon as we can because we don't have it. Um, but I, I put it down as two years, but I. Because of the size of it, depending on what it is, I, I, between two to five years, it's not something that could be done. You know, in one year, two year, or in one year, maybe not even two years. So. More of the long term, but something we should start now. And maybe start now and at least looking at it and trying to figure out how to, how to fix this. Fix the big problems or the, some of the problems right away.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know how to put that. I mean, yes, we need to start on it now. At least looking at it, but it's, it's a, it's a five year project, I would think if it goes to.
My, my under.
Parking lots.
My understanding of these timelines and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would start these things up. You're like, so everything that is past due or now, we would begin that process. It wouldn't be that we necessarily complete it. Or that when it comes to two year, we would begin it in two years. Is that correct?
I think with these, this is, this particular issue would involve working with the county and the city and permitting and this, this, this would be. This is an example of one that, um. Has, uh, many stakeholders probably involved in this one, so. Um, it would be, I think getting out of this, this kind of says, here's the board's priorities and we got to figure out what that. Put together a plan for, and that would go through our subcommittee of building sites, those kind of things. But, but it would give us a direction on where the board wants to go.
Okay, and so Director Loney, Leonie, where would you like to put this?
I'm gonna put it at two years.
Okay. Okay, um. Director Krimmets put this as five years. Uh, she says that she believes the current system works well. Uh, with proper staffing, staff training and other than the green traffic concerns, she, she considers. Um, other options for that particular school, but that she put this at five years. I personally, um. Put this at, uh, uh, announcing. Uh, drop off safety that we should begin that process as soon as possible. Director Cotton?
I put two years, but we don't need to wait two years. And, and we don't have to have a fun. Uh, we can, we could start, um, giving some engineering things or people, experts to come in. And look, you know, just to give us an idea because that's what we're gonna have to do, even, even when the public is involved, we still have to have some information. Keith and I were both on the board when we lost the little. Uh, I can't remember the grade, but I remember. Uh, elementary student at, for a role. You know, I don't know if anybody else was here at that time. Um. It was, yeah. So, um, you gotta remember these schools were built when. Moms and dads weren't bringing their kids to school. They were all on the. Yeah, the school buses. And so things to kind of have changed. And, uh, maybe, I don't know. You know, so. I'm just thinking, looking over the built, our properties and things. It's gotta be a challenge. It's gonna be a challenge, but I, I think, uh, two years and I think, um. We could start having experts looking at it like now, so.
Thank you, Director Cubic.
Director Short Cliff characterized this really well. It, it's gonna be two years for the design. The site preparation and there's going to be. Road changes, paving, and I, I put it because of that. It is, it's not urgent as urgent as other things we're looking at. Uh, that, uh, but it is clearly a safety issue. I put it at five years.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna move to the next one. Turn the page. Outdoor spaces. Replacements for outdoor athletic PE and community spaces, including school. Tracks and new synthetic turf fields at middle schools. So I'm gonna switch it up a little bit. We're gonna. Now I guess I won't. I'll start with you, Director Cubic.
Oh, thank you very much. It's. It is a valuable, valuable, um, activity. Um, but in the scheme of things and looking at this, it's a plan for. It's not urgent and there are potentially other sources of funds that we should seek. And I put it in the, uh, five year category.
Okay, thank you.
And that, I'm also at five years.
Yeah, great.
The total same five years on that one.
Ten years.
Okay. Um, Director Krimmets is at, um. Ten years, nice, but not a priority. Jolene erosion would possibly change the timeline, but because there's definitely problems there, but. And then, um. I am also a ten year. As well, so that was, that went fairly well. Um, new generators, new generators at eleven schools. Um. Take it away.
Ten years, no other comments.
How big of a problem is this now? I mean, are, are, are we having lots of power outage charges and?
Well, over this last summer, we've had a ton. So far, it hasn't carried into September on us. However. Um, adding the generators would. Potentially allow us to keep students in a building if we had a temporary outage, you know, if it was, if it was projected to be four or five hours. We could keep lights on, still serve meals. Um, we could keep them there in the educational setting rather than send them home. Um. But then also you have the. Community aspect of this where a lot of our buildings have gone through the seismic rehab now. Um, so there are a spot that's intended for families to come. In a major event and a generator would help us serve those people and have that safe space.
Director, I can just add one thing real quick. If we continue to invest in like controlled access. It does require power. It is something we need to think about, about having a power supply, you know, and when we train on the way a building is gonna respond in the event of emergency. And when power goes out. Um. The plans completely shift around safety. We train people that this is gonna happen. And so. One thing to think about for me, and we do have. Community shelters and there's all those things that are gonna be super important. This is the place to come to go, be our schools and those immediate nice places, but. I just want us to also think about the fact that if we continue to invest in these technologies, they require power. And so it does, it, it, it does make me a little bit nervous as we invest in. Uh, training for people that see, that needs to be reliable in terms of their, where they practice. That, um. It, it, if things aligned well, where there was an incident that power went out. It would shift the way we reacted. And so it's something to think about for the group as well.
So. I'd say, oh, last year, um. How many times did the, did we lose power in a building during class time? And did it happen a bunch or once or?
Not really a stat that, that we keep. In most cases, it's a couple of hours. Um, one that does come to mind was, I wanna say spring time, we had a, a. Early morning outage. When I say early morning, I mean after eight AM at Roseburg High and that resulted in sending students body home for the day.
Well, I would say five years for that one, for me.
Okay. Um, Director Krimmets. Says that, um, she puts it at five. Um, she was say, thinking, you know, not district wide, but one school at a time. Important to keep all safety systems operable. She didn't maybe the high school first, you know, so she's just offering that. So she's five years also. Um. I was also considering like kids with missed days of school because we have to make those up. So that's. That's also. One of my thoughts as well, but I actually put it as a two. Director Cotton?
Uh, I'm at five years.
Okay. Director Cubic?
I, I personally had problems with this one because it's a little like frosting on our operations, um, and I. Think it could be perceived that way, although our discussion shows it is important. Uh. I, based on what I had here, I needed more justification. I think where this is something we should seek other funding for. So I had a hard time ranking it all, but I'd put it as a low.
Okay, five, ten?
Five. Yeah, my low is, to be honest, I had nothing on this chart that was ten years.
Okay, okay.
My vision of this plan was the five years.
Great, thank you. Uh, fire detection, fire alarm detection and notification system upgrade district wide. You wanna? Did I miss one? Oh, sorry. Everybody's favorite subject, asbestos. Everybody's favorite subject, asbestos removal. Um so asbestos removal, abatement district-wide, including new flooring for abated areas, including new piping insulation as a result of asbestos treatment. Uh why don't we start with you, Director Cubic?
Uh asbestos is a safety and maintenance issue. But my first response to this was, it's kind of an as-required thing. Should we initiate an active remove all of that asbestos everywhere in this district plan in this funding analysis? I'd say no. And so as a result of that, because it is as required and we are doing, and it is ongoing, I put it down as a five-year.
Okay.
I'd do him five years.
You say five years as well? Hmm. And says five years. Could be done earlier as it coincides with other upgrade projects involving the same work areas.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Well, I wanna hear what everybody else says first, so go, go ahead. This is the, being the chair, you have this privilege, so I'm gonna ask you.
How bad is it? I mean, how much asbestos, I mean, I would think for the last twenty years, we've been trying to get rid of asbestos, right? Um I mean, I mean, do we still have a lot of it around?
So the short answer is yes, we do. Um just a quick rough number is ninety-two percent of our buildings still have asbestos flooring somewhere within them. Um we are required by law to observe those, take care of those, uh make, do maintenance. Um if we have bad ones, we have to bring in a, you know, certified abatement crews and remove them. And then we do our air clearances and stuff afterwards, so. Um so yes, there's, surprisingly, there's still quite a bit. Um we do make an attempt every year to remove some uh through projects, either flooring projects, seismic upgrades, vestibules, um you know, we removed some this past summer, so.
Well, I, I put it at five years. I mean, it shouldn't be, uh as long as we're doing it consistently and still working on it, I mean, it's not ongoing, ongoing deal.
Yeah, all right, you gotta, I think you gotta remember, our buildings are like three hundred years old.
Yeah, our buildings are very.
We have to replace all the buildings, so.
Director Shirklyff?
Uh I have ten years. If it's not disturbed, it's not a problem, as long as it doesn't get disturbed.
Okay. Okay. Well, I had this originally as a one because of it being asbestos, but as long as we are keeping up on it, you know, and as I am sure we are, I will also go with five years. Okay, fire detection. Fire alarm detection and notification system upgrade district-wide. Uh take it away.
Also ten years, but I also don't know this, the current sit, uh state of our current system, so. Um I could be persuaded to move that up the list if, if it's outdated by a decade or two.
So the vast majority of our facilities are intended to be manually uh tripped. So a full station is, you know, you smell smoke, you see fire, you go out a door, you pull, pull the handle, fire off the alarm. We have some areas that have heat detectors, so typically a mechanical room, you know, boiler rooms, you know, uh areas with lots of electrical panels, stuff like that. Um very few smokes throughout the district that actually pick up smoke. Um our most modern buildings, uh the student center and the, the main at the high school, uh those have modern systems that have uh horn strobes, smoke detectors, uh stuff's addressable, so if there's a problem, you know where to go to find it. Uh but the rest of the campus ties into the basement of the old main. Um and it, when it fires off, it just says old main. So the fire department has to go down in the basement, if they can't see smoke, they have to go down in the basement, see which light is triggered, read the little piece of paper that tells you this zone is this area, and then they can go. Um so so uh most all, well, I should say, all of our systems are grandfathered in. We're not required to bring them up to code until we do something major enough that triggers that code compliance. The, the vision of this would be to bring everything up to code, which would be now it's enunciators. Um it has a strobe, and there's also a voice message that comes with it, so there's three, three separate ways of saying there's a fire in the building uh to meet everybody's needs, so. This would bring us to that, and it would actually remove the need for pulls. Uh a smoke in every room takes away that, that manual notification and makes it all automated.
No. Um, thank you very much. And um so you're still at ten years? Okay, um we welcome Director Hammerson, thank you. It's good to, no, no, it's very understandable, family issues. Um so we'll give you a opportunity to speak on the other issues to get caught up at the end, but right now we're talking about fire detection. Um do we have an idea of what you weighted that at? And any thoughts that you have on that subject? Do you want me to come back to you in a minute, or?
Yeah.
Okay, Director Leoni?
Put it down at five years.
Okay. Director Cotton?
I'm surprised, of course, it's been twenty-seven years, we didn't do a complete upgrade at the high school. When all that building was going on. And this, this doesn't make sense. Joe, why didn't you do that?
So I, I look at this as um as we have to change a building or build a building or whatever, then you have to, to do it. I do, correct? I mean, you have to.
Well, just a, for instance, the addition of the three modulators at Roseburg High triggered it to where I had to put addressable units in those three buildings and put in a module that even though it rang to the basement of the old main, yet then when it dials out, it does indicate that it is the, at the modulars and which location within them, so.
So I would put it at five years.
Director Cubic?
Oh, interesting, right, I'm, I'm, I'm we have a huge public community investment in our facilities, and I think it's a high priority.
Okay, so you're saying that's
One.
One, okay.
Do it now.
Okay. Director Hammerson?
I was at five as well.
Do you want to add any comments to that? You don't have to, but if you wanted to.
No.
Okay, Director Krimmets. She put it at ten years. We already have close proximity to fire station and viable systems. I also with Director Cubic put it as a one. Um moving on to the next one. Electrical upgrades. Uh panel upgrades district-wide, additional classroom circuits and outlets district-wide, upgrade facility, electrical service. And uh I'll just tell you, my understanding is that the panels are fairly inexpensive in comparison to other projects that we might be taking on, but I know we're not really talking about money. But these schools are so old that they did not have stuff for computers. And then once we did get a computer lab, that's kind of obsolete because now we have Chrome, Chromebooks, so outlets um for even charging these things, I'd see people nodding their heads out there is really kind of a, uh not really available, so um I will say that to get started. Uh Director Shirklyff?
I have this at two years. Um and if we do this, then we can worry less about the fire detection stuff also. Um I mean, that's just my, my basic electrical upgrade is, if it's that old, you're gonna have problems, fires, short circuits, all that sounds fun stuff.
Okay.
So I apologize for beating a shell, but I actually had all this marked down and read through this entire packet, but I didn't uh bring it with me in my uh disorganization right now, but yeah, um I'm operating off of memory, and I think I had this at five years as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um this actually covers a couple of things. Um one is the fire, but also I remember uh when we were talking about air conditioning, some of the rooms that we didn't have the, the, the circuit breakers or enough circuit breakers to put, it's just a portable air conditioner in there. So that, cause that doing this, I'm, I'm gonna put it at two years, because doesn't have to happen now, but it'll help us solve the, the, the air conditioning situation. At least in a local or in local spots where we'd have the hotspots, and then also the fire issue, so I put it at two years.
Thank you. Um Director Cotton?
I put it at five years. Um I could, I could be persuaded to go to two years, but it's one of those things. Uh if we're gonna do something, put these split units in, and we don't have the power, we're gonna do the power, and we're not just gonna put the unit in, in there and let it just sit, so. I mean, that's one of those things that we ought to be able to take money just out of our maintenance, if, you know, um to do these things, but I have it at five, but I could go to two years.
Thank you, Director Cubic.
I, I saw, I see this as a fundamental to teaching and learning. And I also believe it's, it should be part of our preventative proactive focus fund maintenance, and I put it as a high priority.
Okay, thank you. Um Director Krimmets, she said it as two years. Um she says, since so much of learning is online, some limited upgrades may be upgrades may be necessary as needed, but panels to accommodate should also be considered. And then I also put it at a two-year.
Let me change my vote.
You can do that, you wanna change it? I brought in an eraser. Okay, plumbing upgrades, pipe and fixture updates, and bathroom improvements district-wide. Uh we'll start with you. Uh let me, we, just a minute, let me I just wanna ask, Tracy, do you have any comments on this or anything that you wanna say about this? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Um so plumbing is always a, uh it's a tough one to see uh for people to wrap their head around it. Um but uh this past summer, we went through and we changed out all of our, what we refer to as Bradley hand sinks, Bradley's, you know, kinda like a crescent wrench, it's a brand name, but it's the half-round sinks, you step on the little paddle and it spits out water. Um when we made the change at Sunny Slope, so basically our newest elementary, we had to run out and shut off the water because we had nipples breaking off in the wall and created, you know, a major water leak. So each one of the four nipples that were coming out of the walls to feed the two sink systems there were all rotted in the threads, and were just barely hanging on. So none of us knew that, it wasn't leaking, wasn't causing a problem until we put a wrench to it and just immediately it snapped off, so. Um so that's just a, you know, a quick and dirty example of some of the stuff we see, you know, on a regular basis. Um we do have, you know, some sinks that after they sit over the summer, you have to run them for ten minutes to get the rest to clear out, so that you have clear water running, you know, in the classroom sink, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll start with you, Director Shirklyff.
I also had this at two years, like the electrical, I think plumbing, electrical, the building blocks for everything else that we're doing here, you can't do ADA, you can't do these other projects unless you have these basic systems fixed. Um and someone who does a lot of maintenance on electrical and plumbing things, you, you, you're better off getting them done now and not worry about it later.
So you said that was two years for you? Okay, Director Hammerson?
Uh yeah, I'm sold on two years as well. If we got rusty water coming out of drinkable sinks, that's a major problem, so. I mean, I'd be, I'd be flipping between two years and now, but I'll go with two.
Director Loney, Leoni?
Um hmm. Well, I, I put it at five years. Um yeah, but after hearing the rust thing, I might, I might go for two, so. Um let's make it two.
Okay. Director Cotton?
I have five, so I'm gonna go two. Uh just because um I know we'll have this conversation later. This is stuff that should come be, some of this stuff should be coming out of the general maintenance, and maybe we need to visit that and add more money to that.
Okay, so you're, you're at
I'm at five right now, but when we come around.
And you could be persuaded, okay.
Change my vote.
Director Cubic?
Uh, two years, and ditto to a couple of, um, two years and ditto to a couple of comments, this is an ongoing maintenance issue. And uh it is simply ongoing and needs to be treated that way.
Okay, um Director Krimmets said ten years earlier, if needed, as an, as needed basis. And I had put it at five only because I felt like we would be handling it also on an as-needed basis. Um I could be swayed as well to go to two, but um that's where I kind of stood on that one. Roofing, ta-da! Immediate and long-term projects district-wide. Yeah, so I, I did wanna say, in speaking with Tracy earlier this week, that learned that our newest school, which was built in nineteen eighty-three, eighty, nineteen?
School in two thousand three, two thousand four.
Okay, okay, but Sunny Slope, which
Eighty.
Nineteen eighty, and that's the newest, one of the newest schools, and it does, has not had a new roof. Is that correct? We do, we do have a book, but he's ready for this one.
So it received appears a new roof in, in two thousand.
Okay, okay, that's
So twenty, went twenty years, they put a new roof on it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um so uh let's start with you, Director Cubic.
And roofing is a, no diff, roofing is no different from our home and homes. It's a thing they have to do, but it's expensive when you do it, and it's there's not a consistency that helps. I, I actually believe it's in my mind that we've accomplished a lot of roofing work in the past couple of cycles. I could be wrong. Tracy, is that true?
We, we put new roofs on every opportunity we get with the seismic projects or any other major event that we deal with.
I, I put it down as a as a five-year because I'm thinking that is one thing that uh might be integrated into some other concept in the future.
Okay, thank you. Director Cotton?
And I'm not changing my vote on this one. Just telling you, I'm, I, I put it down for two years, just because we should look at it, we should be looking at them. And it's another one of those things, you know, it's kind of a theme I have for tonight is, some of this stuff should be in built-in, or general maintenance, and maybe it's time to add more maintenance to the maintenance.
Thank you. Um Director Krimmets says that she put it at a two. Um she said it's higher, probably higher priority in some places, but um I also put it as a two. Director Leoni?
I put it at five.
Director Hammerson?
Uh I put it at five too, but again, like I'd wanna look at the situation on a case-by-case basis, I mean
Right.
just generally looking at, you know, like, are we gonna replace all our roofs? I mean, in my experience so far, like Tracy was saying, we've taken advantage of, you know, roofing project, if we have a seismic project, or you know, it's, it's been kind of one of those things where it's like, you know, I, I guess like Rod's saying, general maintenance, so. I, I don't, I mean, I don't view it as like a holistic, like we need to get all the roofs done in a certain time period type thing, so. Um yeah, five.
Okay, great. Director Shirklyff?
Five years.
Okay. ADA upgrades, Americans with Disabilities Act slash X accessibility upgrades district-wide. Andrew, we'll start with you.
Five years.
Okay, Director Hammerson?
I put this one down for ten.
Director Leoni?
Well, how bad is it? I mean, do we do? We have a big problem with with accessibility for for our kids with disabilities?
So it varies by site. But probably our our most problematic, yeah, problematic spot. Thank you, is Winchester. We have five classrooms that are not accessible at all by somebody in a wheelchair.
Well, I put now it's past due. I mean, you know, we just have to have access a sex. They have to have this. You know what I mean? They have to. Thank you for saying that. They need to get in there and we can't limit that.
I would like to ask just if Melissa Roberts would have anything to add to this. Any thoughts? We had you have five minutes, Frank.
Tracy actually hit the same campus I was thinking of for the stairs and the inaccessibility for some of our students. And so that's one of the reasons why we haven't looked at that campus for special programs. We are working very hard to upgrade things as monies and things are brought to our attention and moving along. So the bathroom at Hugh Crest, awesome, new bathrooms at our Melrose site, awesome. So we're working on it.
Great.
Winchester would be my school also.
Thank you.
Just if you don't mind, I'll add one other.
Yes.
Most of our campuses also are lacking the ability for a a button push to allow somebody into the front doors.
Okay, thank you.
The high school is one that does. But now with the vestibule does not.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Now.
Okay.
I mark it as that. I just have a couple of questions. So I don't forget. Is it a matter of, I mean, ramp, could a ramp be put? Could we do ramping at Winchester?
At Winchester, yes, we could. It's a pretty extensive ramp. I I want to say I forget my number. I got an elevation, but we're looking at hundred well over a hundred feet of ramp.
Okay, I just, I just wanted it if it was yes or no.
So yes, it would. Yes, a ramp would work.
So I say now. Because you know, we gave plumbing and and everything else to or now, oh, these are kids and and they deserve. So anyway, I say now.
Director Cubic.
This is a maintenance issue and we're doing it as required, number one. Number two, I'd say we we're getting by, and this is the type of thing that federal government's going to require us to do it. Let's have them provide us a grant. So I put five years.
Okay, thank you. Director Krimmets, she actually put it as a ten important access needs. Needs make her make adjustments to accommodations as students served increases. I put it as now. I just agree with Director Cotton, you know, it's just needs to be done now. So that was mine. My vote, the Old Main rebuild. Rebuild Old Main at Roseburg High School, modern facility for learning, career and technical education. Would you maybe speak to this one, please?
Yeah, we you'll see here some design work that we went through in two thousand twenty one, I believe. With brick architecture, I believe, put this together. We did have some renderings of what this could look like. If the board moved forward on this, it would require more planning and development. We had talked about if you're familiar with the campus, having we, you know, we don't have enough space for kids to eat lunch. We talked about turning the library into another kind of spot where kids could be at lunch and and there's some other functionalities we could do there. And a new building could provide a new library, could provide some CTE spaces. We talked about chip manufacturing, a whole bunch of ideas there. Those could be fleshed out, but we had we we've toured our CTE building. We're grateful to have a grant for the roof in the CTE building. And we have a thirst for innovative CTE spaces that could be used. And part of the new build was at least the last iteration involved some space for some STEM CTE type work as well.
Thank you. Director Shirtcliff.
I put two years and we basically condemned the old main building. They're still using it for one or two things. We've got all the classrooms out of there, right? So it's an empty, old, dangerous building in the middle of campus. I think it needs to be dealt with. And we prioritize that in the last bond measure also. So two years.
Director Hammerson.
Actually, when not applicable on this one, I feel like all the other issues are more important. So.
Okay, Director Leoni.
I put five years mainly because it's huge. I mean, to build a new building. And that's what you're saying. You know, we're talking tens, tens of millions. It's not just a million. So I mean, what's realistic? I mean, that's a bond. And who who votes for bonds these days? So I just see it five, 10 years out.
Do you have something to say? Okay. Okay. Director Cotton.
We're not talking bonds tonight, but if we were, this is where I came up, I put it's past due and you know, I know it's gonna be two years down the road, but it's really sad. We have a huge building that is needs to come down in the middle of a high school campus that we could have a we could have a beautiful working space for our kids in this community. And anyway, I I keep it at the forefront. I say now, I will always say now.
Great, Director Cubic.
My assessment was that it's that I have to kick the can down the road because if something's gonna happen there, it's not gonna happen in our operational activities and it's we're not talking about bond, but it's a bond. So I put five years.
Director Krimmets said five years. She'd like to see this project move forward in order to accomplish our strategic plan. Decisions and plans should be made in two to five years. You know, for me personally, I would like to say all of this now. I mean, it pains me to see this emptied space that's just in the middle of our campus doing nothing. But I would, I I originally had 10 years, but I'm gonna put it at five. New gyms. New multi-purpose gymnasiums at elementary schools also serve as emergency shelters. We'll start with you, Director Cubic.
I just give one quick update. Just this is where we were over the last five years. We have five elementary schools, and you know this, having toured the buildings that don't have a dedicated gym space. And so this was not intended to be at all the elementary schools. But this proposal the board had kicked around was five of our schools have a gym slash cafeteria. And so it's it there's a complication of being able to meet P minutes and use that facility in a way as a gym. That's complicated because it's also uses cafeteria. So we didn't put the number on there, but that would have been talked about before. And I think the proposal might was back to the puzzle of five multi-use detached gyms at the five locations in which we do not have a gym and a cafeteria. Thank you.
Ask you a question. In schools that are being built, I would say in the last 10 years or last 20 years, is it standard procedure that there is a gymnasium separate from cafeterias?
Yes, I it's a standard Ed spec of schools today would be a both a gym and a cafeteria. Even in for what I consider we have relatively small schools, even, you know, four hundred, even as as a smaller school, very, very could would be would be an anomaly without a gym and a cafeteria.
Thank you. Okay.
Five years.
Guys, I I'm calling a lot of names here, folks. Anne says 10 years. It's conceptually good and might be tackled one school at a time, but not critical move forward if some grants or emergency shelter. Read that right. Move forward if we get more grants and emergency shelter. Is what she has.
I I would agree with Anne Fingers on those on what she said.
Okay. Steve.
Yeah, I'm gonna go 10 years as well. Two years on this, getting everybody to an equal playing field and having all the elementary schools with two and utilizing space for playing around. Kids want to play, man. We give them some space. So I put two.
Oh, man. The good comments. I I would go for five. I was torn. So these are all so important. This is not. This is not easy. What I do like, though, is I was feeling some pressure about this and I was just reminded that you know, we're not. This is not something that we're voting on. It's not not anything set in stone, but it is a plan and sometimes plans will change, especially when we find out we get grants or whatever, but we need we don't shoot for something, we're not going to have anything. So that gives me some comfort. So we're going to go into infrastructure upgrades. Upgrades, wiring, cabling, wireless access points. I do. I did find out one thing, and I want to give kudos to our guy, Matt Hill. And we've made Matt has made a lot of headway in this area and put in wireless access points. And so I think we're sitting in a better situation than we were. I didn't get a chance to talk to Matt. He was busy, but I would have liked to have had his opinion on this, but we'll start with Andrew again.
I put past due on this one. Get more technology, the quicker we can do it, the better. Everybody needs it in the classroom now, all day, every day.
Director Hammerson.
I'm a little torn with this one because I mean, I'm I'm putting 10 because I just look at what we needed in the nineties, what we needed from two thousand to two thousand ten, what we needed from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty. All different technology and like, I mean, kind of like you were saying earlier, I think Keith was saying it. You know, like we needed everything wired. Now we have the tablets. We we just need the signal going into the air. So it's like what we need in this decade, are we going to need it the next decade? And then did we waste money on all these cables this decade? Because of the technology that we had, and now we have technology that's different. It just it's one of these things that to me, it's like flimsy in terms of if we end up looking back on it and saying we wasted money.
Director Leoni.
I I put down now. You know, as technology moves, we need to move. So when that time comes will change, but right now I just think that especially the wireless, I mean, maybe cabling is is wireless is is basically taking over the cabling. So probably still wiring and cabling is being taken care of the wild wireless. So I'd say right now.
Yep, thank you.
Two years.
Director Cotton, two years.
My perception of this topic is that my perception of this topic, you said, is a it is an ongoing maintenance and is addressed as needed. And so I say, do it now.
Okay, thank you. Director Krimmets says she has it as a two. He says, project to move forward with the electrical upgrades needed and more advanced CTE programs requiring each upgrades. Inquiring requiring such upgrades. So she's at two. I I kind of put this at five, but with the comments we'll revisit that later, and I would be willing to change my my vote. Playground upgrades, elementary school playground updates and replacements. Director Cubic.
There's some observations I would make about availability of playgrounds and community comments about that, but I think this is a grants and fundraiser issue. We put it at five years.
Thank you, Director Cotton.
Five.
I put 10 on this one as well. I feel bad. I'm like saying like, we don't need to do anything, but all my high priority stuff was on the first page. So yeah, I'm saying 10. I think it's like a it's a visual thing. It's a bond thing. So I'll just say 10.
Five.
Well, I I was torn between five and 10. I agree with Director Hammerson. As much as I would love it to be now. I'm putting it at 10. CTE investments, career and technical education slash vocational. Oh, Anne had it as Did I not say what Anne said? I didn't. She had it at two. She says students need good, safe playgrounds to encourage active outdoor recreation looks more appealing to prospective residents and enjoyed by current residents. So thank you for catching that. So CTE investments, since your mic is, oh, it's not on. I was gonna say, since your mic is on. We'll start with you again.
Well. I kind of agree with Director Hammerson. I the first page had a lot of priorities. But and here's CT investments is a high priority. But in the scope of this work, in the scope of this, what we're trying to establish planning for, I put it at five years.
I'm gonna have it match the new building and I put it at two.
I'm gonna get Anne in here before I forget. Anne put it also. She put it actually as now. She says it's one of our chief goals for successful futures. I'll go ahead and say what mine is. I have put it at two years. Because I believe in two years, that timeframe is when I believe our CTE program is really going to be rocking. And we will really have no choice but to make sure we do that. So that's my vote.
I put it at now. Industry is demanding that we teach this stuff. There there's such a big need. They need it now. So that's why I put now.
Thank you.
Yeah, but two. Five years for me.
Okay, now. For the past due, any other, anyone have any other projects they think we need to be looking at that we've not covered here?
Did you want my first five on record or can I just give you the sheet?
No, I thought what we'll what we'll do is go back and discuss these again and see if our if it holds and you can add your vote at that time. That sound okay? Because we'll we'll also want your comments if you have any at that time as well. So we don't have any additional. Oh, you do.
I had two things I wanted to ask about.
Okay.
And they may be resolved. One was cameras.
Yeah.
Can we talk about them? Do you want to do it?
So currently, our secondary schools is where we put the most emphasis on. So currently, our secondary schools is where we put the most emphasis on filling blind spots. We still have areas to cover. Um, our elementary schools, when we put cameras in there initially, we looked at just really covering our entrances uh which now some of those cameras are not needed in those spots because of the fencing. Um, but we're starting to move forward. It's, you know, slowly, but um with re or adding more cameras to the elementaries and then taking, we're actually swapping out cameras and taking their cameras to our secondaries to fill in our spots.
Those should that be on this list.
My thought, we've done a lot of work on cameras, thanks to the board. We've invested heavily in this. I think this is part of our operational budget. I mean, it's kind of in our four oh four fund. I think this, it's not on the list because we believe we've we're about where we need to be in this space and um so that's why you're not seeing the list.
And and the other one I just would ask about only because of past history I'm aware of is are we at a place or is there, and is this something we should include the acquisition of new curriculum in this discussion?
We have a fund for curriculum replacement right now. It's in our um approved budget and
Can be part of a perhaps a different discussion, but this one right now tonight is specific to long range facility planning. So I don't know that curriculum would be considered facilities.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, Director Cotton.
Um, last year we started with the student services, started touring uh our I'm gonna check if the right word, I I say special needs, but whatever the specialized classrooms. We do okay with them. But I, somewhere along the line that it needs, we need to add.
Add space.
Add space. I'm not sure what that looks like, but um maybe I I'm more in tune to it because of the tours that we've taken. And um I'd really like to have that discussion, whatever that's going to look like.
I don't know how to proceed with that one. With um is that something we want to include on this and?
I think it's, I I mean, my suggestion would be just to get, have people think about that. We can talk a little bit about that. I think it's come through committee. Some of the, some of the work through tours, but we could get just a straw poll in terms of where that from a facility standpoint.
Right.
What that, what the interest might be. Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Kind of a facility thing. That's, I would second their, second Rod's comment here or whatever, back it up, because the population for that group is growing rapidly. So there's gonna be need more space to handle more students. It's just, and farther up the line too.
And I I would agree with that as well. So um yeah, so I think we need to start looking at that. I'm putting it as a one. Um, because I knew we need to start looking at that, because we're kind of eliminated on, you know, limited on space anyway, and I don't. We've, I mean, when we tour there is actual classes in old showers. I mean, that we've, we've done, and it looks great, but come on, there's no windows. I mean, there's a lot of amazing things that have been done. But what scares me is this population is growing and will continue to have more students that need need attention. So I'm gonna go around, we can vote. I know that.
I would just use potentially the specialized program upgrades.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Specialized program updates. Okay, so Keith.
Two. I mean, uh, yeah, two.
Okay, and Rod now.
I I want to better understand what, what is it?
So are a pro- a specialized program for students, okay? Um, sometimes they require not just a classroom, but we, sometimes we need to have spaces for uh wheelchairs and, I mean, there's certain showers, kitchenettes, you know. Bathrooming. Yeah, so.
I'd say now.
Okay.
I'll go two. Uh, I'll go now. If there was a one year, I would put that. I don't think it's exorbitantly right now, we gotta do it, but we need to get on it pretty quickly. I I think, didn't the 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 greatest jump in students is basically coming in right now kindergarten, first grade, is the the huge
in terms of a percentage increase of students.
Yeah. Number of students, I mean, there's, it's pretty.
The answer is.
Eighth grade down and then all of a sudden we get to kindergarten and first grade now and it's, it's three times as much as it was before.
Yeah.
So we have some time to prepare for this, but it's, you need to get on, we need to get on it.
I agree. Thank you so much for your comments. Um, let's go back through these and just kind of see where we're at and at the same time give Director Hammerson a a chance to say what he would like to say. So going back to air quality, um, Director Hammerson, where would you be on that?
That one I was past due now. I mean, to me, this one stands above everything else.
Okay. Uh, controlled access. Okay, you're gonna be a two. Um. Okay. Drop off safety.
I said now, but I felt like a lot of our schools, or at least several, the ones that I've experienced, this is already kind of happening. So I didn't really, I mean, like, we were just at Fullerton Elementary and he was explaining this. So it's like, to me, it's like, well, now, because it's already happening out there, so.
So you're putting it where? Now?
Yeah.
Okay. Outdoor spaces.
Five.
New generators.
Ten.
Asbestos removal.
Five.
Okay, so now we have everybody up. So here's what we have, so. Um, air quality unanimous. We're all in agreement that that is something that needs to be done now. Um, controlled access, there are four for now, two for two years and one for five years. So um shall we go with controlled access, since we have four out of the seven?
I'd like to be pragmatic on this. It's, it, you, to start working on it, is start getting engineering, design, site plans. It, it's not gonna happen now. It's gonna happen. Andrew was very clear. Two years minimum to get something happening on a big scale to all of our schools. So I, I would think that if you start the planning now, the implementations to.
Correct, but I, I think that was my understanding is that we would start it now, even though we know it's gonna take a while. Otherwise, we start it in two years and it'll be two years from that. So. Um, so are we good with controlled access being a now priority? I'll take that as a yes.
No.
And.
And like the decision.
You would, okay, that's, that's great. Um.
Keith on the two.
Okay, so we have four that would like to start the process now. We have two that want it in two years and we have one in five years. So. Yeah.
What, just confirm with me, what does, uh, because I'm gonna keep my, where I'm at. I I think start now and it might be two or three years before. Uh, but what does start now mean?
My understanding is that we start looking at this, we make it a priority, we start researching it. Sometimes things are gonna take permits or whatever or.
And all this stuff will be, this will be, the, the bottom line is, this stuff is gonna roll into our facility plan, so most of this is gonna be in here anyway. It's just prioritized timeframe. Right, so I'm like on second page, a lot of this stuff's gonna be there unless it got all, I mean, it's all gonna be there, but it's gonna be prioritized.
It it gives the, again, this is a, think of this as like a visionary document of what the board expects to see the, in our facilities. We then need to go through a parallel process that says, okay, we gotta comp these out, get some prices. There's some of the things that should be done more together. There's also very different scales on the price of these. You know, it's like one sheet of paper is gonna be a pretty low cost, like if we looked at like um cabling and things, cat six wire, whatever, a lot cheaper than a new building. And then we need to start having some discussions on how we would pay for these. So this, I think what this eventually is, this is great. It's been a super great process. It might end up in the facilities plan and jump in Susan if you want to. As when the board says, here's what we expect to see in the future, it could show up as a low, medium, high priority. Or it could show up in a, you know, more of that immediacy. The board's interested in these things at our facilities right away. It gives, it gives, the board's giving us some direction, the community some direction of what expects to see. These all have different processes that it's gonna go through. I wouldn't, I wouldn't belabor that piece. I think it's more of a work. Where's the board's priority with these projects? So I wouldn't get too hung up and, does that mean we're starting it now? Or we're beginning to press, or is it gonna be completed now? Nothing's gonna get, be completed now until there's a funding source and some work done to it. So I would think, you know, things that are gonna be in that past due in two years are gonna be like probably the board's priority immediately in terms of a priority, and that'll help us get us started in some process pieces. Hi, hi Susan, go ahead.
Um, yes, I mean, I think this was very helpful, especially going through exactly what the priorities were um and defend, I wouldn't say defending, but rational um conversation about why it was important. And I do agree with you, uh, Jared, that some of these can be grouped together. Um, that are, it makes sense, it's rational. So I also think it's helpful to be able to take this as we move forward with the community to discuss this and why these are the priorities um that have come forward from the board. Uh, so that there can be a conversation about these um different parts and their importance to you all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so um I believe that we will be looking then at controlled access as a now, since that's what the majority had said. Um, we have a split decision with safety drop off. So if anybody, we have three that say to do it now, we have one for two years, but we have three, four, five years.
Is this where we can change our vote?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll change my two years to five. That will give you majority.
Well, I actually had you as now.
On safety drop off?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave it. I'll, I'll still change it to five.
You're gonna change it to five. Okay. Well, that gives us five years for the drop off. Do we, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna say, can't we add up everybody's scores and come up with an average and it'd be, some will be two point three and then they'll have a line, I mean. We're, I don't know why we gotta decide whether it's in this box or this box. I mean, we've got a, an average score, you know, you can, we can at least know where it's at.
Susan, thoughts on that?
Um, it's, I mean, if if the board is comfortable with that um process, it, I think if you go through, you're gonna start to see some people say two years here, five years here. So maybe you might be able to actually get that average and see, do a couple of them and see how that works.
Okay.
You might ask also, Andrew, I think that we're gonna get something back. And I think at that point in time, we have an opportunity to refine it a little further.
Yeah.
Because some of these, I think, are gonna be grouped also. I think that would help.
Yeah, and part of me too is I was under, kind of, un- operating under the premise of if we were to take a vote, you know, yea or nay type thing, so. And I'm not that great of a mathematician either, so.
It's just quicker is all I was really going after.
You, Andrew, it's not quicker for me. So, okay, so drop off safety will be five years. Just being transparent, okay. Outdoor spaces, we have uh four on five years and three for ten years, so it looks like that will be, outdoor spaces are five years. Um, new generators, we have four for five years, two for ten years and two for one year or two years, one for two years. So the majority is four at the five year mark. Uh, asbestos removal, all but one was for five years. I don't think we need to discuss that. Um, fire detection, this one's all over the place. We have two for now. Three for five year and ten, at ten years, there's two. Um. So. I don't know how we wanna do this.
If it helps you.
You, you'll go to five?
Oh, yeah, I'll go down from ten to five.
Okay.
I'll go from one to two. Are you down to two?
I are both ones and that, we'll, we'll put it both at two years, uh, but okay, it looks like we're gonna be five years for fire detection. Um. Electrical upgrades, we have a majority at two years with five directors making that their priority. Um, plumbing upgrades, we have uh four directors at two years, giving it the priority. Um, roofing, it's either uh, and I know the uh, three have two years and four have five years, but Director Cotton said that he you know, he's on the fence about that one and he could change it.
I already changed my vote once, so somebody else does too.
It's gonna be five years for roofing? Thank you for cooperating so well. Um. Okay, yeah, really. Uh, ADA upgrades, we have three for now and two for five years and two for ten years, so ADA upgrades, so. Um. Anne is not here to say that she would change her vote and neither is Director Hammerson, and they were both at ten years. Um. So, I mean, we have a majority of three, but what do you?
On this particular one, uh, I because I, working within the scope of this document into ten years is ki- it kind of exceeded where, I mean, that's really the end of this process. And so it's time to do it again, but um, you know, I counted the fives and tens the same. Which was delaying it, so I think you have four that are, they delay it. But.
You picked.
It's pretty close, I mean, it's close.
I mean, we're gonna run through this in five more years. So tens in this case could be fives, because it's the, it's the end of this process.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll change mine to five and we'll make it five. And then we have on the old main beat building, we have four who have said that they would like to see this in five years. So, okay. Uh, new gyms, we're split. We have five years and ten years. Um, Andrew, you were the only one that said two years, so.
Stay in full speaking then. What will you change? I'll go up to five then.
I feel like a mafia person or something here. Okay, so new gyms, five years. Um, inf- infrastructure upgrades, again, we're split. Well, we have three that are now two that are two years, one five year and one ten year. Um. I, I will change my vote after some comments that Director Leone said. So I'm gonna put mine in the do now. I don't know if anybody else wants to, but he made some valid points, so. Okay, so we're gonna go do it now. Um, playground upgrades, we have four for five years. There were two for ten years and one for two years, so five years, we'll go with that one. Um, I just wish everybody were still here to kind of put all their input in. Um, CTE investments, we have two for now, three for two years and two for five years.
I'll go to two.
You'll go to two? Okay. Two years has it. Um, other projects, we're looking at specialized program upgrades and we have four for now and two for two years, so that gets, that's gonna go for now. Okay.
Again, it, it, again, it's an observation, because as again, as an observation, this is to get us from point A to point B on this process. And I, and I think when we talked five and ten, if, if you were in one of those categories, you're saying a lower, the lowest of our. if, if you were in one of those categories, you're saying a lower, the lowest of our three, you know, or whatever it is. So I think that works. I don't think, if somebody said five and somebody said 10 and it ends up being at the end, you, your, your input was recognized.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Um, any other comments?
Just quickly, um, I was impressed by how close we actually were. You know, I mean, somebody gave a two and you, somebody said 10, well, then the people that said 10 were just flat out wrong. But um, just kidding, but as a rule of thumb, we were very, we were especially on the top issues. We were very close. And I think that's, I think that's gonna be really important going down the line. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, so that is what we have. Um, next steps?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Board, for, for engaging and, and, and I think our Chair for managing this process really, really well. And, and again, thanks, everybody, for the work done before even the meeting to, to, to read up on these things. Susan, you want to talk a little bit about next steps again, just, uh, just for a few minutes about next steps, particularly the community engagement component and what the board might see uh, next?
Okay, great. Um, so this is very, very helpful. Um, so what we're going to do next is we're going to go back, or we're going to go out to the community, uh, give them a brief overview similar to what we provided to you all back in June, so they can be caught up and on the same page uh, as where you all are in terms of not only the process, but the data that we are looking at. We'll take these priorities that you have ranked accordingly into the different buckets of we'd like to get them done now, get them moving along, um, what it might look like in five years and then 10 years, um, those priorities and um, Jared, maybe we can talk about just getting some real rough estimates for costs. Um, so people understand what that might look like. It's up to you guys how you wanna do that or not, but that's something we can talk about. Um, we'll take that conversation to the community, go through it, and then we're going to provide them a survey. Um, and that survey will talk about um, these components that you guys really had the opportunity to discuss. Uh, this evening, we'll provide in that survey, um, some bullet points uh, that you guys have raised, and I think you recorded this this evening, so I'll go back through it again. Um, to try to bring out some of the voices um, and the points that were made. Uh, so in that survey, they'll be able to kind of have their, your voice in um, in front of them or in your, in their ear. Um, I know that uh, uh, Jared talked about, maybe there might be a couple of other questions that you guys might want us to ask. Um, and so um, you know, Jared, if, if, if there is something along the way that um, we want to make sure we catch the pulse, um, we can include that as well. So we're looking at doing that probably towards the middle to end of October. Um, that community engagement and that survey work, and then we'll take that information, we'll work with um, Jared and his team. We'll bring it back to you all, so you know what that um, results look like uh, for, from that survey and from that conversation. And then um, we'll put a package together so that you all have something to bless, so to speak, in December to submit to the um, the state and it's a roadmap for you all to move forward with um, the work that you all have started on this evening.
That's, that's great. And I was, go ahead, Keith. I was, we may be thinking the same thing. I don't know.
Well, my question was, what is out to the community and engagement? What is it? What's gonna be? Is the school board gonna be involved?
That, that is certainly up to you all. Um, we, what we would like candidly is when we do the work with talking to the community, we'd like you all to be listening um, and not necessarily commenting. Um, because sometimes when board members um, comment about what they've been working on, it, it can be, it can be um, influent, it, it can influence um, potentially. And we want to make sure that the community, not that you all shouldn't influence your community, that's not what I'm trying to say, but we kind of, we would like it to be that you listen to what they are saying, so that way you're able to take their input and bring it back to the conversation um, once we get that survey work completed.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, we'll, we'll talk next steps. I, you know, if we look at the one bond in the last 40 years was passed. It's my understanding, we have two people on our board that were, that were at the table and in this process. Yeah, I think that the process and this community involved a pretty significant amount of board and community participation for a number of years, actually, in the bond. It's two years. So I do think it's worth, when we get back together, as soon as we can work on this, but I do, I do think um, there's an interest, I believe, I won't speak for the board, but for the board to be involved in these community conversations as well. Um, so we'll, we'll, um, I think board wait for, I'd like to make sure an invitation is there. We'll figure out the how this is gonna work. I know a lot of things work on the survey, like electronic survey, but I think there's some, probably an opportunity for some face-to-face conversations as well about our facilities plan, our communities, facilities, they're really community assets we have here.
Wait, bear with me, but I, I want to know what our consultant is telling us our community is. Who are they gonna talk to?
Um, well, the idea would be that we would be able to reach out, um, the principals, reaching out to the families. You know, if we can publish it to get it out to libraries, so people that go to the libraries, any way that we can get um, a connection with the community. We also talked about doing a video, kind of a Zoom meeting like we did here this evening, so that if people aren't able to get to those community dialogues, they can actually come into a meeting where, you know, you guys could be there and um, whoever else wants to join from the community. Sometimes we have a little bit better luck with that. Um, for getting more people that may not necessarily have touch points in the schools. That is a big ask. Is to try to get people who are not necessarily um, as engaged in the schools if, because they don't have children there. We know that there's you know, I think it's what, 70% or 65% of the uh, populations are not necessarily uh, in touch with schools. And so it's important to have them in any way, shape or form that we can get them. So we're working with Chelsea to um, get out to the community. The um, Roseburg community, um, not just the schools. That's the heavy lift that we would like to have done. Does that answer your question?
No, but it gives me an idea of what you're going to attempt.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if we can get through any way, even on the radio to let people know that um, we would like to communicate and have people come to the conversation. I think that's really the challenge is to get uh, to as many people as we can so that they feel that they ha- are engaged. Um, and they can ask you questions, you know, if you all attend, hey, did you talk about this? Yes, we did talk about this. Um, so it, we do want to figure out how best to um, reach out. And so the more ideas and you guys are nodes as well to your community. You are connected through different means. So, you know, we would ask you as well to reach out to people that you know and are, are connected with. Um, so that the more outreach we have, that would be wonderful.
Great, thank you very much.
And I just want to publicly say too, I think, I think tonight, um, you know, we'll have this up on the website and it's, this is a really good example of the community hopefully being able to is they wonder about the process. Thanks, thanks to the board for a public process that lets, and thank you for the vulnerability to wrestle with these conversations openly about our thoughts about this. And to Rod's point, a lot of them were aligned, but there were some different thoughts there. So I think tonight also serves as a way to have people get more information about what the processes look like. So thank you.
Great, yes. Thank you so much, Keith, for your questions. And thank you, Susan Miller. We look forward to seeing you again and seeing what you have for us.
Likewise. Thank you all for the work. This is most helpful.
I just want to say, if we were passing the bond, trying to pass the bond six months to a year from now, put it back on the back of that sewer bill because everybody's paying attention and upset about that sewer bill right now.
Thank you, Director Hammerson. Um, if there are no other things, we will adjourn this meeting. I will remind you, our next board meeting is October 9th at 6 o'clock at Winchester Elementary School. Thank you so much for coming. This meeting is adjourned.